Good evening. The League of Women Voters of the White Bear Lake area welcomes you to this forum for candidates running for mayor and city council of North Oaks. This forum is not open to the public, but is being recorded and can be accessed on our YouTube channel and Facebook page within two days. NineNorth will replay this forum on Channel 15 and online at their website. Please check ninenorth.org. I am Diane Doll, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the White Bear Lake area. I do not reside in North Oaks. I will be moderating this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on certain issues, it does not support nor oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on the ballot on November 8th. All candidates registered for this race were invited to participate. There are two candidates for mayor, and with us this evening is Kara Reese. Krista Walter was sorry she was unable to attend due to a prior conflict. For city council, you have four candidates, and with us this evening are two, Mark Asman and Rich Dumovic. The other candidates are John M. Schuman, and Mr. Schuman regrets that he was unavailable this evening, and Grover Sayer. The questions were received in advance and were screened by the League to assure that they are relevant to this forum, applicable to all the candidates, and not personal in nature. Similar questions may have been combined. All questions become the property of the League. Our forum will be 45 minutes in length. We will start out with questions, in other words, no opening statement, and you will have one minute to answer if needed. You do not need to use the entire minute. A warning will be given with 30 seconds and then 15 seconds remaining. When stop is indicated, you may finish your sentence. The first question will be asked of the candidates in alphabetical order, and after that in random order. If you like, you may have one minute for additional follow-up or clarification after everyone has answered the question. If so, simply raise your hand and I will call on you. Closing remarks will be one minute in length, and they will be in reverse order. Now let's begin with our first question, and I'm going to go to Mark Asman first. What background and experiences have prepared you to be a council member of North Oaks?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My background involves almost 30 years as an attorney, mostly in the Twin Cities. I've represented public entities over most of that career, including cities and counties, townships, school districts mostly of late. I've also served on the NOAA board for six years. I was president for four years. We conducted quite a bit of work while I was on the board, building the West Rec, building the beach bathroom, and a number of other asset studies to help improve the finances. And I've also been on the Planning Commission for the City of North Oaks for the last several years, since early 2019, and currently serve as the chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now the question will go to Rich Dumovic.
Thanks. Thanks to NineNorth and to the League and to all the folks who are making this possible. Thank you also to my fellow candidates. I'm really thinking that we've got a great future in North Oaks, people who are running super folks. In terms of my qualifications and experience, I started service back when I was in high school, and I was part of an organization called Service Over Self. And it was a big part of who I became. And as a leader, I went to the Air Force Academy for my undergraduate degree, and it was there where I realized I really wanted to lead and I wanted to be an influencer. Jobs I had in the military and taught me a great deal about who I was as a leader and how I honed my skills were then brought to my employment, which has been Guidant and Boston Scientific, where I worked globally with regulators from across the country to get new products approved. As far as the city is concerned, I've served on the city council for the last two years, and I've served as the police liaison for the city, a responsibility I take very seriously and look forward to continuing if you allow me to do so.
And now to Kara Reese. What background and experiences have prepared you to be the mayor of North Oaks?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and also to NineNorth. Volunteering is very important to make things like this happen, so thank you. I'm currently mayor of North Oaks for the past two years, which a job that I've enjoyed very, very much. Prior to being mayor, I was on the city council, and prior to being on council, I was on the Planning Commission of North Oaks for four years, I believe. I've been very active in volunteering in various organizations in the city. You can see me at Farm Fest, at a table, or at the Guild. I'm very active in the community. While serving on the council and as mayor, I've been active on the fire board. I was president of the Cable Commission, and also served in the other areas of city government necessary. Through this experience, I learned leadership. I've learned to connect with the residents, and it's been an experience that I've enjoyed very much, interacting with the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question will go first to Rich Dumovic. Do you think the city or the Ramsey County Sheriff's Department can or should do more to protect the safety, security, and privacy of North Oaks? If so, what would you suggest?
Thank you for that question. I've had a great deal of experience with Ramsey County over the course of the last couple of years, and I've got to know the undersheriff really well, also some folks who work in behind the scenes at Ramsey County to make that operation run. I have a great appreciation for all that Ramsey County Sheriff's Office does for not only North Oaks, but for the contract cities as well. We have experienced a great deal of challenges in the metro area from a safety and security perspective, but what I think has benefited the community most is that North Oaks is unique, and the county understands the uniqueness of North Oaks. They understand how important deterrence is, how important speeding is in our roads because they're different than other entities, how they would work with us on a day-to-day basis to ensure that we have the resourcing that we need to make the community the safe place that it is. We have a great record of safety and security in North Oaks, and I intend to continue it through proper support of our police resourcing.
Thank you. The question next goes to Mark Asman.
Thank you. I think the sheriff does a wonderful job with policing the City of North Oaks, and the city has worked very hard over the last decades to protect the city. Perhaps on a going-forward basis, we can continue to think about new and innovative ways to police the community and involve our partners, like the Homeowners Association, to assist and ensure that our community members have an opportunity to participate as well through comments, concerns, and so on. So I think it would be a collaborative effort and an opportunity for continued improvement in strategic ways to protect the city and security. Thank you.
Thank you. Now the question goes to Kara Reese.
Thank you very much. Policing is one of the most important things. Public safety and security of our community is one of the most important issues for North Oaks. This is one of the most important relationships and contracts that the city has, and so how we continue to relate and communicate with our police department is very, very important. We have a special relationship with Ramsey County. Keeping informed and maintaining that relationship is very, very important. Looking at ways that we can further protect our unique community, whether it's working well with surrounding cities to understand what crime is going on, crime prevention, and working with our homeowners association to see what is possible budget-wise and also within our contract, making sure that we're getting the most out of our contract with Ramsey County. This is one of the most important items in all of the surveys we give into residents, and it's important that we maintain this relationship, and I look forward to a very successful relationship with Ramsey County and further policing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question will go first to Kara Reese. What does transparency in public office mean to you, and how would you improve transparency at the city council level?
Transparency is one of the key features of an effective government. It's how we relate to the residents and share information. It's how government process should be done. Transparency means that the residents are informed and that information is available to them. So this is brought to, you know, if documentation and supportive decision-making and making information available to residents must be maintained and continued. Some of the ways that the cities have approached this under my leadership has been that we make sure that all information is available through electronic means, using technology to the citizens' advantage, making everything more accessible, making sure that answers are being given to questions, and making sure that when a decision is being made, that we bring the decision to the public and that they have full transparency of the discussion and information that supports that decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the question goes to Mark Asman.
Thank you. I think transparency at its most fundamental level concerns the ability of the citizens to know what their government is doing, not just at a high level, but at a level that's accessible to find out what the city is deciding, how they're deciding it, and what factors they're relying on to make the decision. And I think that's a very bedrock foundational principle within our country. Ways that we can improve transparency, there are laws that govern transparency and open meeting laws and such, but I think ways we can continue to improve the ability of the citizens to know what's going on is perhaps with our website. There's been some improvements in placing key documents on the website. We probably need a little bit more improvement on organizing our ordinances so citizens know what the law is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to Rich Dumovic, sorry.
Thanks. So when I think about transparency, I think about trust, and I think about the relationship between citizens and their government. And as an example of transparency, when it comes to safety and security, which we talked about just briefly a few seconds ago, it's very important to our community, and one of the things I did as a police liaison is I set up a safety and security forum for the entire community to participate in. We invited the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office. We invited the North Oaks Homeowners Association to participate in that. We talked with the citizenry specifically about the contract cities policing model, financially how it worked, what kind of support came with that particular model, and how it was implemented in North Oaks. We had discussions on how people could be a hard target for criminals within North Oaks, and we had a community open forum where we were listening to the citizenry and hearing what their thoughts were and concerns on policing within the community. So transparency is about trust and establishing that relationship.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Mark Asman. How do you think the city and the North Oaks Homeowners Association work together? What measures could be taken to improve the relationship?
Wow, that's a loaded question. I think each entity has their own specific duties and obligations. The Homeowners Association deals with restrictive covenants in our deeds. The city deals with police zoning, fire, things of that nature, but there is some overlap. There's always ways to increase efficiency through communication with respect to improvements in persons or homes. There's ways to collaborate on security. There's ways to collaborate on roads and policing, but it requires communication, and I think that becomes important. Years ago, when I was on the board, we commonly had interactions with the city. I'm sure that's still happening now, and I think that needs to continue to happen so the parties know what each other is doing and can identify issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the question to Kara Reese.
Thank you very much. This is an excellent question. North Oaks has a unique government. Our homeowners association is very strong, and our city government runs under statutory. We have to follow statutes. We run under, we follow code and ordinances. Our homeowners association is a private organization. They, as was mentioned, follow or were set up with a covenant and follow their own private rules. We can work together. You know, we follow different rules and restrictions. We follow different governing rules, but we have common goals, and we can complement each other. In order to find the common goals and work together, we have to make sure the communication is being had, which we do effectively. We have to stay in our own lane, so that way we're not duplicating services, but we're making sure that goals are accomplished for the residents within our own lane. And maintaining the relationship with the North Oaks Association is extremely important for the future governing of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now the question to Rich Dumovic.
Well, I have the benefit of going third here, and I think the two other respondents outlined that relationship really well between the North Oaks city government and the homeowners association. What I'd like to add to this in terms of how we work together is that the chairman of NOAA's Safe Community Private Roads and Lands group and I work together on things related to the safety and security in the community. One of the things we've been working on is road traffic and safety of pedestrians. Pedestrians share the roads with cars in North Oaks to connect the trail system and to get around in the community. There's a lot of walking going on. There's a lot of bike riding going on, some with children. And as we look at how we're going to tackle that together, it's really important that NOAA, who owns the roads, and the city, who's responsible for the policing of the roads, work together. And right now, we're looking at installing traffic calming apparatus that's temporary, seasonal, so it doesn't impact snow removal, that can work for the community to bring down the speeds and make it safe for pedestrians and drivers alike.
Thank you. Next, the question to Kara Reese.
I just answered it. I think we're in the next question.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, yes, okay. Sorry. You should see this grid I'm working with.
You're doing an amazing job. Keep going.
All right, the next question then, and this will go first to Rich Dumovic. Not much of a rest for you. Should the city adopt a point-of-sale requirement for septic systems? If so, what should they include?
Septics are a big part of North Oaks, and the new entries to our community are often going to be serviced by alternate means. Some of the septics in the community are aged. Some of them are in perfect operating order. A single point-of-sale would be an idea that I think we could explore as a community. I think if we were to do so, the criteria upon which the septic system would be graded and evaluated would have to be determined by the city council, perhaps in concert with other entities within the city like NOAA, in terms of what do we want to see as those criteria that we would be implementing? We'd want to make sure that someone was trained if they were going to be that single point to those standards, and that they understood what the community goals, and then what the regional statewide DNR rules that might apply, how they would impact as well. Complex decision and something that we could discuss at the city level.
Thank you. Next, this question to Kara Reese.
Thank you very much. This issue actually was brought up to city government a few years ago, and our current septic regulations is stricter than state law currently. We require that it be maintained every two years instead of the three years required by Minnesota state law, and we have a stricter system in place. The city's been doing a very good job of making sure that these systems are maintained. This issue is very, very important for the health and safety of our community because it affects the health and pollution essentially. This is an issue that should be discussed with the community, what they want. You know, it really depends on if someone is going to be selling their home in the near future and how a sale or of a home would be negotiated perhaps. Some people believe that this issue should be debated at the point-of-sale, you know, allowing the buyer or seller to agree to take on the responsibility instead of it be mandated. And so this is a community decision to get feedback from the community because it would impact the community and what they do with their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, same question to Mark Asman.
Thank you. I do think it's an issue that in the past, the citizens have generally resisted. I think it certainly demands some further study. As a member of the Planning Commission, we do see commonly requests for variances dealing with septic systems. It's been my experience that community members are either, they don't need to be generally told that their septics need to be replaced. The community seems to be, in my experience, undertaking that effort on their own to go ahead and upgrade their systems when the time comes. So we're seeing a lot of self-healing or self-help, if you will, by the community to go ahead, upgrade their old, non-compliant systems already. And so before, I think, we impose that kind of a requirement, some further discussions with the city and take a survey of where we're at with non-compliant systems.
Thank you. All right, this question is going to go to Mark Asman. Since so many variances are being granted for home height and or garage size, should the ordinance setting the limits be revised upwards? Why or why not?
Boy, we do see a lot of these height issues going on, mostly with walkouts, issues where, you know, is there appropriate slopage? Does the house fit with the topography of the land? All very important items. However, the ordinance does allow for a certain amount of height if certain conditions are met, and we don't often see a situation where an applicant fails to meet those conditions. So yes, I think it's, we're getting to the point where it's, the staff are very familiar with the issue. It's probably time to undertake a review of whether it's worth Planning Commission time to continue to evaluate applications that are almost universally approved. So yes, but within limits. We're trying to control these towering homes and be consistent with the topography and sightlines. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, same question to Rich Dumovic.
Thank you. Yeah, when I consider the work that the Planning Commission has done, it does depend on the particular plat. It does depend on the neighboring plats as well. They look at things like the floor area ratio of that particular plat to make sure that this is conducive with the rest of North Oaks and it's consistent throughout the community. I think we have criteria that are well-established. I think that the city has gotten good at processing these type of requests. What I think could be done is perhaps the criteria could be modified. I wouldn't want to say that they just kind of go away, but they could be modified so that some of the ones that are more modest in what they're asking for can be processed more efficiently, and some of the ones that would be on the extreme end would still have to meet revised criteria that would be stringent for those particular properties, but the number that would actually reach that threshold would be relatively few, making it more efficient.
I see. All right, thank you. Kara Reese.
Thank you. This is, I agree with both of the people here this evening. The Planning Commission has done an excellent job reviewing the plans that come in, the requests that come in, and we do have a pretty detailed process, and the Planning Commission goes into great detail, looking at every aspect of that lot and that development. It really is a case-by-case basis that you need to look at, and so what we've established that's been revised at least once in my time in government is, you know, making sure that builders can use it, and it's efficient, and it is what's needed in North Oaks. Other factors that go into it that I didn't hear mentioned this evening is making sure that the environment around is being protected. You know, you don't want to clear a lot and have these towering trees. You want to make sure that the environment is also going to be protected when you're building your new home, and it's going to be the best build for everything that meets the qualifications that the city has, as well as is the topography and the areas reviewed. So it's very site-specific, but if people have ways that we can improve our efficiency with the government, I definitely would like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question will go to Kara Reese first. More than 99% of peer-reviewed scientific papers agree that climate change is caused by humans. Do you agree that humans are the leading cause of climate change?
Climate change is a very important topic that's being discussed with many of the local city governments today. Many governments have even passed some kind of a proclamation or a document recognizing climate change today. There is scientific evidence today that shows that factors that humans have been involved in for the past decade, two decades, 100 years have impacted proven weather pattern changes. And I look at these peer reviews. I review them. We're even receiving feedback from the state of Minnesota, as well as different organizations that say that our planning and what we need to do needs to reflect this, so that way infrastructure that we put in needs to be sure that the residents, the health, safety, and general welfare are being maintained, that we need to put in utilities that are going to be able to withstand some of the storms coming through, and that we're protecting ourselves. So this is an issue to make sure that we're prepared and that health, safety, and the general welfare is being maintained and recognized, in addition to not just looking at the issue itself. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the question now goes to Rich Dumovic.
When it comes to climate change, I think it is undeniable that human beings have an impact on the climate and how it is changing. However, what I think is really important when it comes to North Oaks is that we not subject ourselves in North Oaks, the very unique nature of North Oaks, to leadership from outside North Oaks telling us what is best and what is not best for our climate. I think we have a rich history within North Oaks of valuing the resources that we have been blessed with. I think we have developed great respect for those resources. It's part of our character and who we are. So I do not want to subject the citizens of North Oaks to dictates from folks outside North Oaks telling us what might be best for our community. Rather, I'd like to leave it up to NEST with the North Oaks Homeowners Association and the Natural Resource Commission within city government to make decisions and recommendations as to what is best for the community of North Oaks. So we certainly do play a role, but let's keep the decision-making central to North Oaks and not give it up.
Thank you. And now to you, Mark Asman.
Thank you. I think Louis Hill's vision involved protecting the environment, and I think we try to do that in city government and have tried to do that over the last 70 years or so. I think the focus really needs to be on sustainability. We've tried to incorporate those concepts within the comprehensive plan and decisions that we're making, at least on the Planning Commission, certainly on the council level as well, that respect the environment, that respect clean water. We just had a discussion about septics a moment ago. So we're doing things, I believe, already to improve and continue to improve our sustainability. But yes, I do think that humans have had an impact on the environment, and it's something that we need to continue to study.
Thank you. This is a related question, and it will go first to Rich Dumovic. What should the city of North Oaks do in response to climate change, including the increasing incidence of drought?
We've seen that. We have wetlands that are not quite as full as they have been in the past, and water is becoming an increasingly significant issue for our community. First off, our namesake Pleasant Lake sits in the center of our community. It's undergone some challenges. Currently, it's shut down for E. coli. It's been shut down for Swimmer's Edge before, and it's increasingly weedy. Restoring Pleasant Lake to its name, I think, would be something would be something that would be very, very important and a focus that's going to require resources beyond North Oaks. But we should do that. We should also look at our responsibilities in the Greater St. Paul Regional Water System because the drinking water for darn near half a million people flows through our community, and we take that responsibility very seriously. So as the environment changes, how are our responsibilities for that watershed that filters the water going to change, and how do we adapt to that, I think are things we need to confront.
Thank you. Kara Reese.
Thank you very much. How we can address climate change in North Oaks at the local level is by, during a drought specifically, is making sure that we're taking care of the resources that we already have. So making sure that the environmental and all of the assets that we currently have are able to sustain long-term, to make sure that the water that does get into the ground during droughts is recharging, and we're caring for a lot of the resources that we have. We need to focus on conservation and restoration of what we have. This would appear for government entities to make sure that our building practices are responsible, that the water that we have and the ground recharging capabilities are maintained and restored, that we're protecting that. We're not just overfilling and building in a very irresponsible way. We make sure that our water management programs and the way that we're engineering everything is done very responsibly. And taking all of this together, in addition to making sure that St. Paul Regional Water and other organizations such as Vlamo that we're working with, that we're well-informed and working together in a succinct way to protect the ground and the environment, to protect the water. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to Mark Asman.
Thank you. It's a very, very broad question. We're already seeing issues with White Bear Lake and the litigation involving the conservation of water in White Bear and how that may affect our city and with respect to water supplies that are at least municipally supplied. The issue involves really more than just the city of North Oaks, but our neighbors, regionally, state, global. And so I think we need to study how impacts of decisions we might consider may make, would impact our neighbors, would impact the state, and work together to collaborate on what's healthy for us and what's healthy for our community overall in the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question will start with Kara Reese. Why are you the best candidate for the position you are seeking?
Thank you. Very interesting question. I think that I'm a good candidate for this position because I have done a lot of work forging relationships with not only the residents, but also the organizations around us, communities around us, cities around us. I've worked with the homeowners association, with Vlamo, neighboring cities, St. Paul Water. And forging these relationships is a very important start. I've come up with important goals, and we're just starting. It's just the beginning. Two years was not enough. And so with all the time and effort and putting in the effort in forging these relationships, and with my experience in municipal government specifically, we can now implement a lot of the projects that are very important to North Oaks for maintaining the public safety, the health, and general welfare. And I look forward to another two years. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, Rich Dumovic.
I think I'm the best candidate because I am focused on safety and security for the community, and I've done, I've taken action while I've been in office to actually make the community safer. I've worked with the sub-association up in Rapp Farm, the homeowners association there, to reduce the speed in that community. We listened to what citizens wanted to do. I championed that effort, did research as to what it would take to actually change that, met with their homeowners association, met with NOAA, met with Ramsey County, and ultimately, we made that change. We're working on reducing the speed by instituting these traffic calming measures throughout the community. I have secured radar signs, portable radar signs for residents within the community who are looking to reduce speed more locally. And I've partnered with the before-mentioned Safe Communities Group within NOAA to help ensure that that voice is present and set up that community forum where we could hear from residents as to what the most important things were for them. It's important to our community, and it's an area where I'm focused on, and I say fully fund the police and make sure that they have the support of the community to do their job.
Thank you. To you, Mark Asman.
Hi, thank you. I think there are a number of factors that make me a great candidate for city council. Over the last number of years on the Planning Commission, we've had a great deal of conflict with a number of difficult applications. I've tried to respond to those with fairness, welcoming, deliberate with respect over some of the issues, and try and come to a decision that respects the views of our applicant, our city, yet pursues the best interests of our city in a very good-faith manner. I think listening and experience also count. I've been involved with politics as an attorney for years and years, representing public entities for a very long time, and I think I can understand how to deal with conflict and resolve it and collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm watching the time and thinking that it would be timely for us to go to our closing statements, and we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order. So you're first, Kara Reese.
Thank you very much. I love North Oaks community. I've lived in North Oaks for over 12 years. I have loved being mayor and getting to know the residents for the past few years. I enjoyed being on Planning Commission and City Council before that. This is a wonderful community that we have, and two years is not enough. I've only just begun. Issues that are important to me are public safety, road safety, crime prevention, and of course, health, such as water quality, and maintaining a healthy environment. I will continue to work for the residents with transparency collaboratively, and together, we can make North Oaks a better place. I would work with organizations such as NOAA, Vlamo, Police and Fire, and I listen to residents. North Oaks is a wonderful community, and we need to bring it together after some contentious issues that have recently ended. We're a wonderful community. We have common goals and common interests, and it's time to be neighbors again and get along and work together. We must together maintain the vision of Louis Hill, which made up our great community. Please vote for Kara Reese on November 8. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Dumovic.
Yesterday, my wife and I served at Farm Fest, which is an annual get-together in our community. And one of the things we did is we worked at a game that included kids tossing bean bags into little targets. The kids were extraordinarily well-behaved. They were respectful. They were encouraging of each other. It was really engaging to be around that energy. We saw several dozen kids come through. When I think about those kids, I think about the North Oaks that they're going to inherit. You can't build a community like North Oaks today. You can't change a community into something like North Oaks. The only reason this place exists is because more than 150 years ago, somebody had a vision. And then about 60-some years ago, someone, when they were thinking about developing into the community it is today, decided to retain the legacy that is North Oaks. And we've got a tremendous responsibility as city council to retain that legacy and to pass on in North Oaks to those children who today are throwing bean bags, who are going to be the next residents of North Oaks, to turn it over to them in a manner that we can be proud of. And I think that that's something that I would be committed to doing if I were elected again for a city council.
Thank you. Mark Asman.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank the League for hosting this event and allowing the candidates, and myself included, to greet the voters. Thinking what drives me to serve, a number of ideas come to mind. Foremost is the vision set by Louis Hill so many years ago. His intention was to create a special community, to preserve and retain the natural environment. The way he lays out roads and follows the contour of the land, preserving trees, developing building sites to complement the land. Today, I want to continue to pursue those visions. And I think I'm trying to do that as the current Chair of the Planning Commission. It also means privacy, private roads and land, and with a feeling of solitude in our community. And I want to continue with those efforts. But also, safety and security. That's an extremely important issue, I think, for the community and myself, and also seemingly a common thread in the comments this evening. If elected, I will work to move beyond the recent conflicts we've been experiencing and renew productive collaborations within the community, and I hope to be elected. Thank you.
Thank you all. This concludes our forum for the evening, and we thank all the candidates who participated and the audience for your interest. This forum may be viewed on the League of Women Voters YouTube channel by accessing our public website, I will spell it out, L W V hyphen W B L A dot org, or on our Facebook page. And I want to make a reminder that voting day is November 8, and early voting is available September 23 through November 7. Thank you all very much.